You're alive, how do you share? Copy. All right. My call is, I got seven o'clock on my clock here. We're gonna call the Humphreys Town Council meeting of Tuesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty to order. Roll call, please Lisa.
Councilman Brewer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Brewer.
Not here.
Councilman Fields.
Here.
Councilwoman Will, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Miles.
Here.
Councilwoman Neville.
Present.
Councilwoman Willis. Vice Mayor Nickerson. Mayor Wood.
Present. I will have a moment of silent prayer reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen. Please join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
All right, we seated.
Voted your flag from a uniform.
We got one in the background here in the town council chambers. All right, next is the option of the agenda. Any amendments or requests to the agenda?
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to make a few suggestions for the agenda. And um, let's see. One of them, and I guess they would be all separate motions. Okay. So. Okay, so I had sent the council information on a staffing report and that required a job description position and a sheet that shows the salary for all town positions going back three years. And that can be broken down with staff, especially with the treasurer with the other portion. I had initially asked this in July and received some information from the town manager, but not all information and there have been new positions posted and created. So this is something that would be good for the town to know and a good amendment to um, to our employee handbook. So I'd like to make a motion that that agenda item would be added to tonight's agenda.
But what, just just for a point of clarity, what information I guess is missing? You say you got some information, but some was missing. What information?
Job descriptions of all positions was not submitted.
So.
Salaries of town staff going back three years was not. And this is all everyone on the council has been aware in the press of these emails.
Right, but I think the, in the last email I responded, I asked just to tell me specifically so I could make sure what was missing.
Right, but this is nothing new. So I had asked in July for all those positions. And we all are aware citizens, I apologize if you don't know because it wasn't added to the agenda. But there were positions missing and I remember seeing a planning position posted to the website, so I can't even tell you exactly which position is missing because I'm not sure on positions that are on town staff anymore at this point.
All right, so um, we can uh, so you're asking for information from the town manager about positions that you requested in July, but you didn't get all of the information.
I am asking for that agenda item request be added to the agenda so that we can formally make a motion, which is to formally direct the town staff, which will be the town manager. And as far as those salaries, that would be the treasurer who reports to the council to complete the work. If it's made in the motion, maybe it'll be completed. It has never been a motion before. So I'm asking for these items, this item to be accepted. And the ask will be made in the form of a motion so the town staff can get us the answers. And I've been asking since July, but not in the form of a motion. So tonight it's in the form of a motion.
All right, so you're you're motioning for information. All right, so that she she's put a formal motion on the floor.
Second.
All right, and it and it's been second. For information, I'm just trying, because I I'm trying to get it clear. The the motion is for information for all the salary and positions that the staff has because the one you have is incomplete.
Exactly, the one we received in July, it's never been completed. Job descriptions for all positions in town. All positions for the past three years and going back to the salaries over the past three years. So even if you have a sole planner right now and that's, you haven't had it in the past three years, that's fine. Just put planner. Whatever that salary is, but that's it. I mean, it's in the emails. This has been going on since July. Everyone on the council is aware of this.
I've been motion seconded or any other discussion on that motion? Okay, and I'll call for the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nickerson.
I just want to.
I couldn't see.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, because I couldn't see. Let me change my view. All right, go ahead now. Now I can see everybody.
I I just, before I am able to support or disagree with the motion, I want to understand the purpose of it. What is it that we are looking for, considering that that information should be made public? But however, knowing that as council, our purview is limited with regard to staffing. So I want to understand what the purpose is, what is it that we are looking for or trying to accomplish with that?
So it sounded like it was a informa- that that was my line of questioning there, Vice Mayor, to ask. And she said information with all the job descriptions and the salaries of all the staff that's been in Dumfries for the last three years.
Yes, I heard that.
Okay, well.
I heard what the request is. I'm trying to understand the purpose of their request. Is there something in particular that we are looking for?
I've already stated the purpose, oh.
If if I might just a moment, the the current motion is just to add it to the.
Just to add it to the agenda, it's not for discussion. Thank you, Ms. Pandek for keeping me straight. All right, so the motion, it's a motion on the floor if we want to direct the town manager to get that information. So right now, that's just a motion on the floor to direct the town manager to provide the council that information.
No, the motion is to add it to the agenda.
To add it to the agenda first.
Yeah, I'm sorry to make it too complicated.
I got.
We're on the agenda at this point.
It was not on the agenda. We're trying to add it to the agenda.
That's that's what I understand, Councilwoman Neville's motion.
Okay. All right, a- any other questions on the mo- on the motion to add it to the agenda? All right, got it, gotta make sure. We'll keep it on. All right, so there's no more questions about adding it to the agenda?
My question wasn't answered.
Your question wasn't answered?
No.
What's the purpose of adding it to the agenda?
Right.
I I I'll yield a four. Councilwoman Neville, do you want to respond to that question?
That really doesn't speak to just adding it to the agenda and besides, I have already presented that information. Um, no one said anything about making it public, but if that's what you all choose to do during the conversation, if it's added to the agenda, you can do that. But adding it as an amendment to our, it's important to know job descriptions and as council members, we are stewards over the town budget. So if we don't know what these salaries are looking, this is good information to have. And it's not anything that we did not use to have or that the town council used to have on hand in the past. Um, so it's just a good practice to use. So I can't even tell you, like I told the mayor before, I don't even know all the positions. But having job descriptions is a basic human resource practice that we should have, and that is something that could definitely go in the back of as an amended item or amendment to uh, employment handbook. Um, knowing these salaries, knowing the positions that have been used in this town over the past three years and the salaries for them is very important. Especially we can keep an eye on when positions are created because that is a fiscal impact to the town, which we are all responsible for and we do not know right now. So that is, I hope that clears it everything up for everyone and this has been since July.
Vice Mayor, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions about adding that to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna call for a question. All right, Councilwoman Mouse?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Neville?
Aye.
Councilman Fields? Hey, Councilwoman Willis?
And can the clerk read the, read it again one more time? The question?
The um, the motion on the floor, Lisa, you want to read it?
Yeah, could you read that Lisa?
The motion on the floor is to add employee job description and salary, excuse me, for the past three years.
What to the agenda? Okay, yes.
Let's see, where are we at? Uh, Vice Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm willing to discuss it.
Okay, and I will say no, it passes for the two. All right, we'll add that to a discussion. We'll make that um, the letter D. All right, Councilwoman Neville?
All right, I'm here. I was making a note on my copy of the agenda. So the other item I would like to have considered to be added was would be the updating the home occupancy certificate to reflect lines in the home employment certificate in the county. Um, I have friends who have businesses in their basements and per all the guidelines stated, this is something else I've been working on with the town manager and we kind of got stopped at the definition of group instruction. In the county, if you have space in your home, you can have a business like yoga instruction, tutoring, learning pods. I have a friend who opened up a gym in their home. In the town of Dumfries, we cannot do that and this has grown increasingly important with the record numbers of people across America filing for unemployment. So if we talk and discuss what the group instruction can mean, then we could position citizens to throw out their own life vest so they can have their own jobs in their homes other than just the office where you can only have one person come in. So the motion would be to add the updating the home employment or home occupancy certificate to the agenda.
Now I just want to check a point of order because I think that was already added to to the site or it was added to our ordinance already.
No, it says no group instruction.
So you're looking for the group instruction?
Exactly, so that should be up to the council to define what group instruction means and if we want to improve that. My point, my position is that ours should reflect the counties because it's a benefit to live outside of town so you can actively run a business in your home.
Pandek, I just wanted to to get your, is that a definition we need to go through or should that go back through? I I don't know if I didn't talk to you about that one, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I I I think, and it may be that my comments on this go to the matter after the council decides to add it. But it would seem to me that on a matter that has essentially zoning implications that the council would want before initiating a zoning text amendment to have information from the uh, planning director as to the current ordinance uh, and perhaps a recommendation. I leave that up to the council, but I I don't think that it's as easy procedurally as simply taking a vote tonight to make that change. I think it ought to be packaged in the form of a proposed zoning text amendment for consideration by the council and then it would have to go to the planning commission and then come back to the council.
Yeah, we're, and and this is, this is one of those things, Councilwoman Neville, that you went through with the temporary roadside food vendor permit and getting that in there. And I remember the challenges of of just council couldn't get it. It it went back and forth between the planning commission and the council and and who would end up doing the writing. So this is, I I I understand because I was, I remember being in the same situation uh, seven, eight years ago, trying to get something added to the ordinance and procedurally, uh, how it's supposed to take place. But okay, so the motion is you want to add yoga and group instruction into the home occupancy or what?
No, just the definition. Right now it says you cannot have group instruction and I just want to add the comment because it's not like this is new to our town attorney. We discussed this and during that conversation, this, none of this that was said tonight was said before. So actually, I. Clear that that was the process. I could have definitely taken steps to get this process going before people are hurting, people are unemployed and all they can have is one person visit the office right now. So this is very important. I take this very seriously. So we'd be very clear and this is something, um, the council, other than those who did take me up on calling to talk about the items I was going to add to the agenda. Um, you know, you would not be aware, but this is something the town manager, I was told it was left off the last agenda because staff needed time, but that was not the first time town manager and I had discussed this. This has, this is nothing new to him. We've already had these conversations. It's about defining group instruction, which for whatever reason, no one wants to add. No one, I've discussed this before and this needs to be a council decision to define that definition. But if we need to go through the planning commission, which I have no problem with, but I am a little disappointed to hear about this different process that could have been explained to me almost two months ago.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Mayor, if I might, the motion is whether to add it to the agenda. If the council decides to add it to the agenda, then it may be that if the council wants to initiate such an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is the required legal process for amending the zoning ordinance uh, that the council can initiate that concept. If the council is comfortable with the planning commission uh, being given some text or recommendation from the planning staff. I don't have a text amendment to work on at this point. Um, and and I do, and I and I might, perhaps Councilwoman Neville, I should realize as I've I've had some discussion is that the council may not be generally is familiar with how zoning text amendments are to proceed as I assume that the council was. That's my error and assumption on it, but a zoning text amendment, if it's to add a new definition to the zoning ordinance needs to be initiated by the council. It can be by actual language or it can be ask staff to prepare language for the planning commission. Or it could be the planning commission preparing the language. It has to come with a recommendation from the planning commission before the council can vote on it.
Okay.
Ago, I want to be real clear about that.
So your motion is to to define group instruction.
Group instruction.
Define group, define the group instruction.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is to add it to the agenda for that discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah. To add, defining group instruction to the agenda. All right, I I just gotta get the language when I call for the question. All right, so that's a motion made by Councilwoman Neville.
Second.
Okay, second by uh, Councilwoman Mouse. All right, any further discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none. All right, Councilman Fields?
No.
And Councilwoman Mouse?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Willis?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Neville?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Sorry, so um, no, I think it should go through the proper channels as Ms. Pandek has described. So no, we don't need to discuss it tonight if it needs to go through those other channels.
That'd be a no for me. So I think that fails three to three.
I have a, Mr. Mayor? Don't we, do we have to have it on the agenda to direct the town staff to have the planning commission look into this? Because how much trust do we have to take in order to have them, because that's my my mindset in order to have, to initiate that process? Does that have to come in the form of a motion?
Mr. Mayor, the answer to Councilwoman Miles's question is yes, the council needs to initiate a zoning text amendment.
Okay. And did you have any other questions, Councilwoman Mouse?
So how could we, I mean, so to that point, how could we proceed? If you, if it has to go through the planning commission and we're not going to discuss it, how could we proceed? Is it dead at this point?
Ms. Pandek?
Mr. Mayor, to answer Councilwoman Miles's question, the the failed vote to add it to the agenda means that it's not added to the agenda tonight. I leave it to um, the uh, I I, that doesn't mean the issue is dead in terms of raising it as a potential zoning text amendment. It's just not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Neville?
Yes, so, all right. The last agenda item form I submitted was for establishing meeting expectations. That goes as far as the format of our agenda, action items versus public hearings. Um, the number of public hearings set for a meeting process for council to submit items for the agenda. Town manager reports, town attorney, attorney reports, even attorney presentations. Department head reports and presentations, treasurer reports, uh, notifications to the community, timeliness and whatever else the council wants to add to that. But overall, the um, agenda item would be establishing meeting expectations.
So so the uh, the the point of order on that is that we wanted, I wanted, I asked for input from everybody to put in there so that we wouldn't have this long round robbing type of discussion situation. But I asked for council to submit comments so we can actually add that to the agenda with everybody's feedback and positions from that way. And so that was the the way I wanted to order that and give it a precise so that we can have some organization to it. We've had several meetings where we've discussed items and went around with a lot of ideas and there was nothing concrete taken from it. But council had opportunity to actually input and that's what I uh, stated in the email that I sent out.
Yeah, and I saw your email, but that doesn't mean that that is the word and that is how we have to go about doing this. So I want to, even if we have this on the agenda, if we have the conversation and if you could discuss your process, then that's something that can be happen, happening or taking place on the agenda if it's added to the agenda because it definitely needs to be discussed. I don't mind having a roundtable discussion about it. And we got seven people, several different opinions on several things that fall under establishing meeting expectations. But one person can't just shut things down and stop it from moving forward to take action on it. So, but it it's an agenda item that I'm proposing.
I I'm I'm just saying that agenda item is currently out of order because of the process that I asked for council to submit it back.
We never voted for your process, Mayor, so it's not necessarily out of order, but if we take a vote, everyone decides they don't want to vote for it on the agenda, then it's not on the agenda. But you can't just say it's out of order, like.
Ms. Ms. Pandek?
To answer that?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, what's the question?
Um, can can I say that it's a out of order motion?
You can say that and then a vote would be taken if the council wants to appeal your decision on it being out of order.
So there can, there can be a vote to appeal my decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can't say it's out of order, it just has to be a motion to appeal the decision.
Well, I moved that we appealed the decision, which goes back square one, putting this on the agenda.
Was a motion made?
Yes, Councilwoman Neville made a motion.
I second it.
All right, so it's been motion to appeal my decision, not to take the motion to add the council processes to the agenda. All right, and it's been seconded by Councilwoman Willis. I will uh, call for a vote. All right, Councilwoman Willis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mouse?
Yes.
Councilman Fields?
No.
Councilwoman Neville?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
No.
And that's a no for me. The motion to appeal it fails. All right, next on the agenda is to uh, approve the rest of the agenda. See, a motion to approve the rest of the agenda with the added letter D, staff positions for the last three years.
So move.
Who uh, who moved it? I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All right, any, um, for, I think we've exhausted the discussion on the agenda. Uh, Councilwoman Mouse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Neville?
Aye.
Councilwoman Willis? You on mute? Yes, Councilman Fields?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nickerson? That's a yes, and that's a yes for me. All right, the agenda has been approved with the adding a letter D. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the October sixth meeting minutes.
Move the minutes from October sixth?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Miles, they're second.
Second.
Vice Mayor has seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? All right, seeing no discussion. Councilwoman Neville?
Aye.
Councilman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mouse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willis?
No.
All right, Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me. The motion carries five one. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comments. Are any citizens, uh, I see one hand that raised, um, it's the hand, you have uh, three minutes. The floor is yours.
Good evening, microphone check?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is uh, Robert Hand. I'm with, uh, I live in Williamstown. Um, as this meeting was just starting, uh, the the county board of supervisors that I'm recording on another computer, they were bickering over a recent measure that the House of Delegates passed that the police shall not pull over vehicles for a number of deficiencies. The of note would be uh, items dangling from the rearview mirror, tinted windows. But esp- especially concerning is headlights not being on during hours of darkness and such. Anyone with a shred of law enforcement knowledge knows that this is a sign of an intoxicated driver. If not stopped by police, there can be grave consequences to include vehicle damage, damage to signs in the neighborhood and even death. I specifically remember being woken up at two in the morning from an intoxicated driver right outside my my court. I asked that the council send a letter of concern to the county board and the appropriate general assembly members to reconsider this measure as it relates to public safety. Like I said, some tr- trivial offenses like objects dangling from the rearview mirror are understandable to be done away with. In the current climate, that's said to um, be used as a pretext pretext for a possibly racially biased stop. That's a not arguing that, I I think the, that rearview mirror objects would would be trivial enough and and that can't be, that shouldn't be argued against. But this is one of the more egregious ways that the current assembly that the current general assembly is actually inviting harm to the community. So again, I I asked that you. So again, I, I ask that you please raise a letter of concern for uh, public safety and how the, how this affects, uh, police being able to do their jobs and, and protecting the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hand. All right. That concludes our public comment from looking at the audience. All right. Next is, uh, mayor and council comments. All right, Councilwoman Willis, do you have any comments tonight?
I have none, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Mouse?
Nothing.
Okay. Councilwoman Deville?
Uh, yes, just a reminder for everyone to go and vote. Um, early in-person voting started at the Jeff Simpson Community Center yesterday and, um, I voted there today, it was great, the staff there is courteous as always, so please vote, whether it's today, tomorrow, November third, if you haven't done it already, vote. Um, also join me on Friday for candid with Councilwoman Deville and I'll be joined with Ms. Jane Reynolds, uh, the vice chair of Prince Wayne County Boards of Board of Elections, Ms. Lily Jessie on the school board, and Ms. Sakina Blunt to talk about COVID, mental health, voting and education. Thank you, stay safe.
All right, thank you. Councilman Phils?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, again, get out and vote, people have already started early voting. Um, and also, I am on the ballot again, uh, for another four-year term. So I appreciate your support and I've been glad to, um, serve the town the past four, almost four and a half years as your councilman. Looking forward to working with, uh, people in the future. Uh, you know, please take in mind that if I haven't knocked on your doors because of the COVID restrictions, but, uh, definitely continue to follow me on Facebook and I, I keep you abreast of what's going on and what we've done here in the town. So we'll see you after election day, is when our next meeting is.
And thank you, Mr. Phils. Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Um, no, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments, I want to wish a, um, one of our former council members, uh, Mr. Clyde Washington just celebrated his eightieth birthday on October the fifteenth, he celebrated eightieth and his, uh, family did a video tribute and Miss Washington wanted to let me know that was, uh, being put up on YouTube, so we definitely wanted to, uh, give a shout out. And I'm, I'm sorry, we didn't think to put a resolution together, but I think we, we could come back for the eightieth birthday, that's one of those milestones. Happy birthday, Mr. Washington, and we say, uh, continue to get well soon. Also, um, if you, in our, um, in our lobby area and you read the history on who this building is named after, Mr. Wilmer Porter, he was actually born October twenty-second, nineteen fifteen. So, uh, Mr. Porter's birthday is, uh, is, is coming up, so that was an interesting fact, I didn't know him and Mr. Washington's birthday were so close together, so, uh, to the namesake of the building, Mr. Porter. Uh, I, I got to run into, um, one of the former mayors came and had a good conversation with the other mayors, the, the boner who uh, talked and told me some great things about sitting on the council with Mr. Porter and, uh, being on that thing, so it's always, um, good to have those community conversations. Um, definitely voting is, um, very active, I know, uh, some of the biggest questions everybody was asking was when is that, that voting place open? Well, the Dumfries Community Center is officially open, you don't have to call, listen to no more messages, all you gotta do is show up. Monday through Thursday, I want to say it's from eight to seven, and I think Friday and Saturday, it goes from eight to five. If I'm not mistaken, I think those are the timeframes of the early in-person voting and there, there is also a ballot drop-off locations. Um, if you want to know about the candidates on the ballot, um, I've done some live interviews with each one of the candidates now whose name is on the ballot, I put it on, uh, the Facebook Live and I will also um, be having another conversation with a, a new candidate that showed up on this Monday coming up. Um, so you can stay tuned to hear it, hear it platform and we'll be talking about, um, some other things. Uh, usually around this time of the year, the last Thursday of the month, I usually do the mayor's business roundtable. Uh, I know it's a different year, we're gonna figure out how to do something late, a little bit later on, uh, in November possibly, where we'll get the business roundtable back together because we can't get together. I know the, uh, former president stopped by and saw me today, Mr. Danny Cosner of our Dumfries Business Association, asking if we were gonna have one this year. And I just wanted to let the business community know, we, we still looking to, uh, hear your ideas and the things that's important to you out here. Uh, so we will definitely get back to the, um, business roundtable. And, um, that's all I got. All right, next on the agenda is the town manager's report. A town manager, the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to highlight a few things for, for the public and for the council. Um, next week we will be mailing out vehicle license bills as well as real estate bills. Uh, those will be due on December fifth, uh, but we are getting those out next week so that everyone will have plenty of notice. We are encouraging everyone, uh, due to COVID to, uh, use our online payment method or, uh, payment by mail, uh, to make those payments. Additionally, we are planning to reopen our DMV customer service center, uh, next month. Uh, we are working to make sure that we can do that as safely as possible for not just the staff but as well as the public. Uh, so it will be open by appointment only, so we will be putting out additional information on how to schedule your appointment, uh, once those, uh, uh, once those, uh, softwares have been, uh, taken care of and made available. I also wanted to just congratulate the town council as well as the town staff. Uh, the town was awarded the distinguished budget presentation award for the second year in a row and only the second time ever for our recent fiscal year twenty-one budget. Um, so that's accomplishment that a government cannot make by itself, it takes residents, the governing body as well as the dedicated staff, so, uh, that is something to definitely celebrate. And, uh, the last thing I wanted to highlight is that the Dumfries Cares Act grant funding applications are open and we are accepting applications. Uh, the deadline is November fifteenth, so I just want to encourage everyone, um, that is dealing with the impacts of COVID to apply for that. Uh, we have grants made available for you, uh, so I just wanted to remind everyone that the deadline is November fifteenth. And that is all I have tonight, Mayor.
All right, any questions, I see Vice Mayor, uh, for the town manager report, Vice Mayor Nickerson, the floor is yours. Vice Mayor, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have some work being done in the house, so I gotta stay on mute. Um, but I just wanted to congratulate, um, the, the town manager and the staff on winning the award budget, and as you said, for the second year in a row and for the first time in the town's history that we are on the radar and receiving such a prestigious award, so thank you for all the truth done, staff as well, and please keep up the good work. Um, with regards to the cares, was it the cares act, Dumfries Cares Act funding, I was interested in how many applications we've received to date and if we've not received any applications, will the deadline be extended? And if not, or if we still don't receive any applications, what happens to that money if no one applies to receive the grants?
Uh, we have not received any applications to date. Um, but I know that the application process, uh, requires, uh, some time, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we will get applications. Um, uh, it's a little too early to tell, uh, whether we'll need to extend the deadline. Uh, the only thing that I want to make note of is because this is, as we discussed, when the council approved this, uh, process, uh, the Cares Act funding, uh, needs to be obligated by December thirtieth, uh, so we are bound by those requirements of the grant funding, so uh, we could have an update for you, uh, probably next month to see where we are in the process and if we need to look at adjusting the application deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, Vice Mayor. Is that all the, um, the questions you have on the town manager's report?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, was there any other questions for the town manager's report, uh, Councilwoman Mouse?
Yeah, I just want to say, um, did I want to congratulate, um, for the awards, want to congratulate the town manager and the staff, you've been doing a great job. Um, so I'm definitely appreciative of that. I also want to shine a spotlight on the police department, I've been very impressed with their work lately. Uh, they've been very visible, very, um, interactive with our citizens and they've just really been taking community policing to a whole nother level, so I just want to say they're doing a great job and, um, I'm very, you know, well, they've always done a great job. They've always led the way with community policing, but they're taking it to newer heights, so I just wanted to make sure, um, we're all noticing that and I just want to say kudos to them as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, was any other council members had any comments or remarks before? For the town manager, okay. Uh, send it, I'll comment, oh, Councilwoman Deville, sorry. You blended into the.
Yeah, right, it blended with my background. Um, yes, I just want to echo sentiments and, uh, congratulate town staff again on their hard work and receiving that award. Um, I also wanted to celebrate the town of Dumfries Police Department, uh, they are the epitome of what it means to be, uh, community policing, they're out, they're doing a lot of work. Um, all the police seem very happy to engage with citizens, um, in no way like they have in the past. So it's really exciting to see, uh, they have a very, uh, uh, bustling Facebook page and they always share their pictures and what they're doing in the community with the kids and with citizens just all around town and they just rock and I'd also like to commend, um, Ms. Ragland for doing a wonderful job of, uh, keeping us connected with the senior citizens through the senior luncheons, it's always good to check in on them, come in, be able to help her. Um, she's doing a wonderful job keeping that service going, so, um, kudos to the staff, you all are doing a great job.
All right, thank you. Um, Town Manager, I wanted to ask about, and, and, you know, what, what everybody said about the finance and the police department, um, one of the ideas that that's radical that I've been bragging about to uh, elected officials around the, uh, you know, the, the nation, being in a national legal city, is I've been bragging about the program where we were proactive about bringing teenagers and teaching them what happens the first time they get pulled over. You know, my son had the opportunity to participate in that and then we, uh, that, that's been outside of the box because the first time, especially a black male gets pulled over, it's not a good experience and so, uh, the captain came up with the idea to, to get the young people engaged in their first controlled environment traffic stop to know what to expect and to know what is out and I know the police department because of COVID, they get a big response, but they're looking to do that more and more in the future, so that's, uh, you know, something that I was, uh, uh, proud to see and, and to have my son actually participate in that and, and that traffic stop exercise and what to expect and what to do and what information I have handy. So, um, definitely pass that on, uh, to your staff. Wanted to ask you, could you elaborate on how CPACE, uh, event went and just talk to the public a little bit about that because that's one of the, uh, I know that's one of the projects that we're proud to get and I don't think that, uh, local, uh, press has covered it enough or given us kudos. Councilwoman Phil had the opportunity to share in the town sections at the BML meeting and it was, uh, well received and so not too many localities have the CPACE program, so you can use just, I mean, I think that's big and we gotta continue to promote it and, and talk about what we're doing there, so if you could just talk about, I, I, I was busy and I couldn't attend the workshop, but just, you know, if you can update that.
Yes, Mayor, so, um, we had, we had our kickoff. Uh, as you all know, the town has partnered with the Virginia Pace Authority to administer our program and it is, it's a creative financing method that allows, uh, businesses to be able to make improvements to their property, so we are asking that every, anyone that would like further information on how they can participate and requirements, um, they can visit not only the town website but also our unique page within the Virginia Pace Authority's website. Uh, you could also find, if you were not able to attend the kickoff webinar, um, that video is available on the Virginia Pace Authority's website so that you won't miss out on any of that information.
Right, thank you. Um, and if you can, oh, I see you, Councilwoman Deville, there are a couple of projects that I think that, I know I get a lot of questions about it, I don't know if council, if you could just give people kind of like an update on, uh, the two biggest projects that we got going on, one being community housing and, uh, Rosies, I think people think that the mayor always has the answers. Um, so just on, uh, where the, those projects is open, is available, you know, people think that we're, uh, we're the developer on that project, but any updates on the community housing project, like wood phases and where they're at with that? And, uh, also the, the Rosies project, that's like, I think outside of when DMV is gonna open, those are the next two questions that, uh, that the, the citizens get me when I'm walking around town.
Uh, sure, I will, I will attempt here, I believe that, uh, the, uh, target, uh, open date for Rosies is, uh, January. Um, I believe that is what they had stated, uh, last time, uh, there was an opportunity to check in on the progress with the build out. And in regards to community housing partners, um, I know that the apartment building that is up, they are, um, they are leasing, um, that information is, uh, available, uh, I know if you visit the site, uh, you can get the leasing information. Um, and that's about all I, I know in regards to the status of, uh, that project.
What, what, do you know if they're putting, uh, w- we go over there, it's a lot of dirt, are they gonna put like green space and treberies and stuff up?
I, I, I would rather not speak to that at this time, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd say that the, the, the site plan that was approved by council is what we are working to ensure is, is implemented.
Thank, okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilwoman Deville, you had, uh, some more questions and then.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, um, gosh, I forgot to ask about the, um, the cares funding. So will there be anything or like a fax put up with the, um, any questions or anything to guide citizens on, or not just citizens, just business owners in town, um, with any questions they may have as they complete their applications?
So, so I believe in the, in, on the webpage, we asked, uh, them to contact the town if they had any questions. Uh, also, once we receive applications, we're happy to work with, uh, organizations, so if, if something is not provided or anything like that, we will reach out to the applicants and make sure that, uh, we have everything that we need. And everything that we're asking for is just simply what we are required to, to ask, there are not additional um, steps in the process that are just town-related. It's pretty much all just related to the obligations we have related to the funding we've received.
Okay, so it's definitely best that they, uh, submit information early so you all can help them get it all completed.
Yes, and applications are first come, first served, so it is definitely best to get it in as soon as possible.
And let me ask again, because all these updates that I see in your report, um, especially with CPACE, is there an update on the newsletter so people can know what we do have out there?
Ye- yes, so, uh, we are, the newsletter was done, but I wanted to hold off until we can provide the appointment information for the DMV. Um, but we have provided in regards to CPACE, we, uh, tried to keep everything up to date on latest news so that at least, uh, if you missed something, you can go, check the website and under latest news can see the, the major things that we've been working on and get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Um, I just wanted to remind folks to piggyback off of what you mentioned about questions with regard to Rosies, that as Rosies is moving into the town of Dumfries, we have had plenty of conversation about the amount of jobs that they will be bringing to the area, so I encourage residents to be aware, go to the Rosies website, check and see when they are doing a career fair and, um, prepare yourself to apply for the jobs because these are jobs that are coming to our town in walkable distance of our most densely populated communities and it should serve as a great opportunity to be able to work closer to home and cut that commute.
All right, thank you. Um, cou- couple of things, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, one, bring up the census twenty-twenty a- and, and I get your feedback from that and I want to commend the ladies on our council and, uh, Officer Torres, uh, for the video, uh, that they put out to encourage people to do the census. But, um, Town Manager, can you tell us what the data, like, how do we trend based on the last ten years, uh, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty on our census, did we improve, did we stay the same, how was our self-reporting on our census?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor, for, for that question. The, the data that I saw showed across Northern Virginia that everyone was pretty much consistent with the response rate that they had in 2010. Most communities ticked higher, but by percentage wise, it was very comparable to response in 2010. So in terms of the rankings of who had the most and who had the fewest, it was the same as 2010. It is also worth noting on that subject that we still have 11 days to complete our census. So I think maybe what you wanted to, were, are getting at is to encourage everyone that there's still time to complete. For town residents, there's still time to complete that census. We have now until October 31st.
Alright, so we're, we can do a mad dash and make sure we're all sharing the, the census self-reported video that the ladies put out and let's, let's put a little push and see if we can improve it by October the 31st. Last thing, and then I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Willis. Do you have a projected date with you'll build this out for us, the council chambers, when that'd be against COVID ready?
Uh, yes, so because council decided to continue with virtual meetings through the remainder of the calendar year, the safety enhancements will be in place by the first of 2021.
February 1st, okay. There you go, Councilman Fields. I got that question in for you. Councilwoman Willis.
On the CARES Act funding, the last time I saw the business license list, there was, there was a lot of businesses that were no longer in, in town and some, has that been updated?
Has a business license list been updated? Uh, the business license list, it gets updated regularly. We've had several people to apply business for business license. But as it relates to the CARES Act funding, it asks that your business license be provided with the application. So that's one of the items that the town has some control over. So we will absolutely work with anybody. That would not be a barrier to, to be able to apply for funding as long as the business is eligible to have a, a town business license.
I understand that. That's, that's good. That's, that's wonderful. But our business license list was, was not up to date. There were businesses on it that don't exist anymore. And along with that, we don't know who to even communicate with to find out if there, I mean, we need to not only add new businesses, but we need to take away the businesses that are no longer involved in the town. Is that being done?
Yes.
Okay, when could we see an updated version of that list?
When, whenever you'd like.
How about, how about the end of November?
Sure.
Meeting in December. That way the CARES Act information, it won't disrupt it.
Sure.
Um, I got another question about Rosies. I understand that when we voted on Rosies coming into the town, we were assured that the, that they were going to have security people and involved in their particular, you know, establishment. Um, I have heard about that they have asked to have off-duty police from Dumfries Town be involved in some of the security. Have you heard anything about that?
I cannot speak to that. However, that would not be uncommon for any other business in this town or in any other locality.
I understand that, but it was so, it's so ironic how they assured us that they didn't need the police and how they assured the town council that this wasn't gonna happen. And then all of, you know, now it's coming out. They should have been upfront from the very beginning. That's all I have to say.
Alright. Alright, seeing no, uh, further discussion on the town manager report, we're gonna move into our presentation. Alright, we're gonna have our Route One Widening Project update from our Director of Public Works, Ms. Jonay Purvis White. The floor is yours, Ms. White. Oh, this white.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Wood and Vice Mayor Nickerson and members of the council. My name is Jonay Prevost White, Director of Public Works. And tonight, I would like to introduce a resolution to support the town's application for smart scale funding for the Route One Widening Project. The Smart Scale Prioritization Funding Program is available to agencies around the Commonwealth to assist in the cost of competing transportation projects.
Excuse me, Jonay, I don't mean to interrupt. Are you gonna do the, um, the presentation on the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Share my screen, don't I?
Yeah, and, yeah, you're gonna do the, the Route One Project Update and then we'll do the Smart Scale Application after that one?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I had to, I had the Route One Widening Project Update and then I had the Smart Scale Application the second after that one.
Oh, okay. I, I can do it in that order if you want to.
Please, just not to confuse me on the agenda.
Alright. Did that one? Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Can everyone see the screen? Alright. So as many of you know, on July 9th, my birthday by the way, so happy birthday to me. Northern Virginia Transportation Board awarded the town an additional funding needed to cover the cost of construction for the project, um, for the Route One Widening Project. The design for the project has reached 60% design phase. Revised roadway plans are available, both on the VDOT website and a link has been provided to those updated plans on the town's website via the Public Works page under Route One. Talks between property owners, town staff and VDOT has been ongoing and adjustments continue to be made to the initial roadway design as they are feasible. Trying to think. Currently, the town is in discussion with Prince William County Transportation Department to take over the project management of the project for the town. The Prince William County Board has given their full support of the project. And additionally, an MOU between the town and Prince William County has been drafted and is under review by town council and staff. An additional agreement between Prince William County and VDOT will also be completed by the county. Once the project has transitioned, utility relocation discussions will begin and right-of-way acquisition is tentatively set to begin in spring of 2021. Uh, here's a, here's a quick timeline. When we were awarded our funding, Prince William County, MOU and right-of-way acquisition. These times are all tentative because we don't know when the MOUs will be signed. But hopefully things will stay on track by the spring. Prince William County is very eager to begin this project and help us stay on track with our goal. And that's all I have for the widening project.
Okay, just a, a quick question I have. It says we're in the 60% design plan.
Yes.
What do we need to do to get a completed design? Is that before the MOU or after the MOU?
It's after the MOU. Prince William County will take over design, uh, discussions with the town and, um, citizens that have any lingering concerns about issues that they have with the roadway design.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, it's the same thing. Does anybody else have any questions on the presentation? Just, okay, Councilwoman Miles?
Yes, and this might be throwing y'all for a loop, but with Prince William County, with us going into a MOU with PWC, would this have anything at all to do with the rebuild of 234? Because I do remember a couple of years ago, we got a presentation from Prince William County about how they wanted to redesign 234 to give, to take away our right term going in. Is this, Mayor, do you remember what I'm talking about?
You're talking about on the Potomac Shores Parkway project?
Correct.
Uh, to take 234 across on the Cosner property and all of that and that, that, um, the county in Potomac Shores is still negotiating that Osner hasn't signed his property over.
Okay, but there's no way they can try to merge that in with this?
Oh, it's absolutely merged. We've had multiple discussions with the county about that project and how these two projects intermingle with each other. The town has a lot of reservations about the redesign for, uh, Potomac Shores. They redesigned the initial design that went for approval from the county. And because they changed more than 50% of the, the design, they'll have to go back for rezoning, is my understanding.
Okay, so it has been redesigned. So what they originally proposed is not what they want to move forward with?
It's not, and it's not better.
Oh. Um, are we gonna get a chance to see what the new design, um, looks like? Or do we have to wait until it goes to rezoning with the county?
Yes, I believe it'll have to go to, to rezoning because they're not quite sure what they're gonna do. Prince, uh, Potomac Shores is still trying to figure out how to make that part of the project, to execute that part of the project.
Okay, when you say it's not better, is it worse for us or is it, it is? Okay. Alright, looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question about the presentation for the update on our Route One Widening Project here? Okay, Councilwoman Willis?
Going back to the conversation between Ms., Mrs. White and Councilwoman Miles, will our, will the council be able to weigh in this, weigh in on this particular design stuff with Potomac Shores as well as our citizens in town?
I, I am not sure. That's actually a question for the planning director.
If I can jump in, uh, the conversations about 234 involve private property and a developer as well as the county. So we have been working with the county because it has a great impact on the town. But as Ms. Prevost White stated, the original approved design is no longer what appears to be the design that the developer would like to move forward with. So yes, ma'am, the town would have an opportunity to weigh in and that's why we are working with the county from a staff perspective to make sure that we're in the loop on progress. But as of right now, there is, there's nothing that has even received, gone through the process for the county for us to weigh in on an official capacity. That, Ms. Ms. Prevost White is just letting you know that she, she's on top of it from the staff perspective so that everybody can stay in the loop.
That was why I was asking. I mean, I know there's nothing to comment on now because nothing's been proposed on a new, on a new design. The thing about it is, is it, the last time, we always were one step behind the developer and one step behind everything and we got, you know, annihilated basically. And that's why I'm wondering if the town council has, and the citizens, the ability to weigh in on this and she just answered the question. So thank you, Ms. White.
You're welcome.
And, and, you know, as council did last time, we have the opportunity to go to the Board of County Supervisors meeting just like they will have the opportunity to come to our meeting and voice our concerns with the project and the design when it goes to their planning commission. Yeah, I think that's where we get involved in the process. Alright, uh, any other questions about the Route One Widening Project update?
No question or comment, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Fields?
Just Ms. Prevost White and town manager and others. It's quite ironic, the mayor and I were just talking about this last night on Spotlight in Dumfries. And I want to say the reason that they're going back and forth with the designs is because they came to town council and are opposition to it a couple of years ago. We stood up strong and we stood up for our citizens here in the town. Like we keep saying, it only helps Potomac Shores 100%, but it does not help Dumfries at all. You know, 10% of that project will still lie in the town of Dumfries and it's gonna help our Potomac Shores 100%, but hurt Dumfries 100%. So we need to keep it in discussion. We need to keep on them and make sure they listen to us and what our desires are for the town.
So noted. Thank you.
Alright, Vice Mayor, did you have anything on the presentation before? Because I can't see everybody, so I'm just gonna ask, no?
No, thank you.
Okay. Alright, and Councilwoman DeVeau, did you have anything, uh, before I move on? I think those are the only two.
I was just, um, I will say I was wondering to myself if we were gonna process this action item as a public hearing or not.
This is just, um, just a presentation, an update. The, the, the Smart Scale Application we have actually.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright. Alright, next on the agenda then, seeing no more discussion on that, is a resolution to support a 2020 Smart Scale application. Jonay, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to finish stating that, um, the pre-application process for the Smart Scale funding began in early May and the final application was submitted to VDOT in August of 2020. A resolution to, of approval from the town is required for the application process to be considered for funding. And the town council has already approved Smart Scale applications in the past. And that's really all that I have to say. I kind of went through my spiel early on. If anyone wants any more information about it, I'm happy to answer questions.
No, thank you. I think that's, uh, that, that was very pointed. Smart Scale, uh, we've applied every year for Smart Scale. Smart Scale has given us zero dollars towards our widening project. For whatever reason, I've went down and talked to the Assistant Secretary of Transportation about it. Have even had intense conversations with our own Senator Servill about this. And he feels that since NVTA gave us money, then the state gave us money. So I definitely think this is a resolution worth approving to ask Smart Scale to put some money in on this project. So, um, I, I'll just go around and see your comments on this, Councilman Fields. And I just go around because I can't see everybody. Any, any comments about a resolution to support the 2020 Smart Scale Application?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman Miles?
No comment.
Okay, Councilwoman Willis? Councilwoman DeVeau?
No comment.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
No comment.
Alright, so the requested action is a motion to, uh, for a resolution to support a 2020 Smart Scale Application.
So I'm a.
Okay, been moved by Councilwoman Miles. They're second?
Second.
Okay, second, Councilwoman DeVeau, seeing that we've exhausted discussion, I call for the question. Councilman Fields? Aye. Councilwoman DeVeau?
Aye.
Councilwoman Willis? Councilwoman Willis, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Miles? Vice Man Nickerson, I see you said yes. I, I saw you.
Yes.
Okay, and that's a yes for me. Think that motion carries six zero? Alright, next on the agenda is a ordinance to authorize the town manager to execute a lease agreement for town-owned real property at the 17739 Main Street. Mr. Rogers, floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the ordinance that is before the council, uh, tonight is to amend an existing lease for a tenant. Uh, so the ordinance that is before the council, uh, tonight is to amend an existing lease for a tenant, uh, on the third floor of our building. Um, this, uh, amendment constitutes a deferment of a portion of rent. Um, and as was discussed, uh, at the previous council meeting, I, following a public hearing, I'm looking for a motion from the council to approve, uh, this ordinance.
So move on said motion.
Okay, well, he wants me to open it up to a public hearing first, uh, Mr. Fields, and have a discussion on it. Thank you for your eagerness to make the motion. I'll come back to you. Alright, was any, uh, questions, I know we, uh, we moved this, uh, from the last council meeting to this public hearing, so is there any other, uh, um, discussion on it? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up and see if any, uh, members of the said community had any questions about, uh, us admitting, authorizing the town manager to execute the lease? Okay? Seeing no hands, I will now, uh, close public portion of this hearing and move back to now, I will accept the motion from Mr. Fields.
Uh, I repeat, so move on said motion from the town manager to move forward.
Okay, it's been motion by Mr. Fields, is there a second on his motion?
Okay.
Okay, it's been second by the Vice Mayor. Alright, any further discussion on the, uh, authorization to execute the lease agreement for the town-owned real property? Councilwoman DeVill?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask if any of our other tenants have, um, been given the option to defer their rents?
And, and I think, I believe that they're, these were the only ones that asked, but, uh, Town Manager? Is anybody, anybody else asked?
Uh, as I, as I stated at the last council meeting, due to COVID, we have worked, uh, with all of our tenants and so no other tenant has requested an amendment to their current lease, which would constitute a deferment of rent. And just so that is clear, in order for that to happen, it will, needs to be approved by the town council. So if, if this, if this situation were to come up again for any other reason, um, it would have to be approved by town council.
Are the other tenants aware that they could ask to have their rent deferred?
We've had conversations with all of the tenants in light of COVID and we've had individual discussions based on, on their needs. Everybody's situation is unique.
Yes, uh, but to be abundantly clear, are the other tenants aware that they could have had their rent deferred?
I'm not sure how else to answer the question, we've had conversations.
It, I think a yes or no would probably be best, I'm just asking, like, you know, I understand what you're saying, I hear you perfectly clear, but that's not the same as they all were made aware that they could all, you know, go through the same process and have their rent deferred?
Yes.
Alright, Vice Mayor? And then I saw Councilwoman Willis. Alright, so the motion on the floor is to, uh, I just want to make sure before I vote a Vice Mayor Nickerson and Willis that the motion on the floor is authorized, town manager to execute a lease agreement for town-owned property. So, just wanna ensure your comments and directed there, Vice Mayor.
Um, so with regard to whether or not others have been made aware, is that something that the town would typically advertise? That, hey, come get a deferment, or how does that work, how does that typically work?
So, all of the leases for public property are approved, uh, through this process that we're engaging with right now. So all of the tenants are aware that amendments to that lease require approval through this public process. Um, as I was stating earlier, we've had conversations with all of the tenants in regards to, um, the hardships that they may have incurred related to, to COVID. But everyone's situation is different. Uh, we'll call a couple of months ago that we, uh, council approved a lease for a tenant that reduced their, their square footage. So, everyone's not gonna have a, a, be in the same situation. But we've had those conversations and, and any that required further action from the town and amendments, uh, we've brought that before the council.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman Willis?
To piggyback on what, um, Councilwoman DeVill asked, um, did letters go out stating that due to COVID nineteen or any situations brought on by this, that they could possibly defer part of their rent? How, I mean, you say conversations, I mean, I can, has anything been documented that this particular type of thing went out to each and every tenant that we have in that building? And secondly, hang on Derek, I'm asking the town manager.
No, no, I, I got that, but I just wanna make sure that we're, we're on it, we're, we're on it, hold on, hold on.
Hang on, I'm not finished.
I got it, but I just wa, I just wanna make sure that we know what the motion on the floor is and what we're discussing with the discussing.
We're discussing.
We're discussing a lease agreement, right?
Exactly.
That was about, that was about to expire and he came up for a discussion.
I understand that, please let me finish.
Alright.
Secondly, um, due to the fact that, um, you know, conversations are, are meaningless without a paper trail. Um, and everybody has a different particular, I mean, this particular one is different than the one before that. And yes, they are coming before us, but, um, as we sit and wait for things to happen, if we have, uh, gone forward and put out a letter from our, now, you know, town Dumfries since the, you know, the building belongs to us, letting people know that they have this option, has that happened? I'm not talking about conversations, I'm talking about physical, uh, information put out from our offices here, through your office, to these tenants. And secondly, um, if, is there a cutoff date for any of this? Do this by such and such a time, or it's not, it goes away? Plus, do we also, uh, when we start this ball rolling down the hill, do we also, um, have the, um, ability to pay our mortgage? If these things keep coming up and up and up and over and over and over? I mean, if a letter went out, I can see where everybody has the ability to say, yes, I need this, this and this and come to us with this type of thing. The, the thing is, is we haven't heard that, I mean, did you send out a physical letter?
Uh, so Mayor, uh, our property manager is TriMark. They handle our tenant relations in regards to leases and in, in collection of rent. Notice in writing was provided from TriMark to our tenants in relation to several things related to COVID. In response, a number of tenants reached back out and explained their unique situation. And what I have said before is that paying your rent is what you are obligated to do from your lease agreement. If there's anything other that is to be discussed or negotiated, it must come before the council. So, I'm, I'm, that, this is a situation for this particular tenant, um, and so it is before the council.
Again, did TriMark reach out, you said several tenants, did they reach out? Since you say that they are the property managers. And sometimes we have information from you and sometimes we have information from TriMark on tenants. Do, did they reach out with a letter to all the tenants talking about this? Or you had, do you have any idea?
Yes, ma'am, I, I just stated that TriMark sent a letter to all the tenants for a plethora of things related to COVID nineteen.
Can we see a copy of that letter?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
By next council meeting, or wait a minute, let me do this, today is Tuesday, by Friday.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, the motion on the floor is to accept the lease agreement on a, uh, Lisa, can you tell me who made the motion? And second, the motion again, I'm sorry.
Motion was mailed by Councilman Fields, second by Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Okay, got it. Alright, Councilman Fields? Yes? Councilwoman, uh, Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeVill?
No.
Councilwoman Willis? Councilwoman Willis, I couldn't, I didn't hear you.
No.
Okay, Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
That's a yes for me, I think the motion carries four to two. Alright, next on our agenda is a closed discussion with a specific legal matter pursuant to the Virginia Code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven Alpha eight. And, uh, I'll read this in, the town council. Mr. Pendak, you have the, uh, the, the, the motion to read this in?
Yes, sir, I do, it's, uh, one matter of consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel and its proposed purchase and easement agreement. And as you stated pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A eight.
Okay, so moved. Is there a second? Second, okay, second, Councilman Fields? Alright, any discussion about the, the motion? Alright, seeing none, alright, Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willis?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeVill?
Aye.
Councilman Fields?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nickerson? And that's a yes for me, uh, motion carries six zero. It's, uh, eight twenty-two, give everybody a stretch break, let's, uh, come to the closed session at eight thirty-two. Gives you time to get your stretch break and, and to get your bottle of water. Alright, we'll, we'll be back, we're gonna-